To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. William E. Dix, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Mary E. Scherz, a former employee of North Syracuse Central School District. Susan Liberty Porter, a 1980 graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. And Michael D. Jasner, a North Syracuse Central School District, a graduate must be. Thank you. First presentation is student-staff recognition. Dr.
Seventh grader at Rock.
One teacher has been. Becoming certified, you have achieved the highest. Recognize the following.
Holly Lee. Teachers who achieve the National Board Certification have met high standards through study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review, and we are truly lucky to have each and every one of you on our staff, and congratulations again. And last but not least is our 2012 CNY Scholastic Arts Award. Thousands of creative Central New York juniors and seniors high school students submitted their best artwork and hundreds received honors for their award-winning entries into the 2012 Central New York Scholastic Art Awards Program. North Syracuse Central School District is honored to have 17 students receiving honors for first place, which is Gold Key, and 24 students receiving honors for second place, which is Silver Key. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read off the names of the Gold Key students, and if you are here, please come on up. And forgive me if I mistakenly pronounce your name. Troy, is it Furco? Fucco? Okay. James Coon. Allison Kamrowski. Stephanie Sawyer. Congratulations.
Ashley, you can get a shot.
Sure. Hang out with us for a moment. Nicole, is it Dudin?
Dudin.
Dudin?
She's not here.
Okay. Bailey Eglisten? Say it again?
Bailey.
Bailey's not here? Okay. Reed Garner. Lauren Hess. Leanne Phelps. Taylor Weir. Cara Beard. Tara? Come on up! Yay! Samantha Leaf. Well, congratulations to all our Gold Key winners. For our Silver Key winners, Melissa Sabine. Carly Rebecca? Rebecca? Carly, congratulations. Okay. Well, I'm going to call everyone's names. Nicole Bergen, not everyone's here. Lindsay Miller. Austin Brown. Anthony Spinelli. Gannon Andrews. Julia Benneck. Hannah Haven. Bacalia Morano. Elizabeth Simmons. Selena Tavon. Amanda.
Zeobro.
Zeobro. Sarah Jordan. Holly Hurst. Alexandria Obey. Maggie Donahoe. Rach. Rachel Penasuglio. Christopher Gazier. And Christopher Gazier. Congratulations to you all.
Yes, go ahead, Mel.
I just congratulate from all of us to the students, but we have a lot of art teachers here in the audience, and in my heart, you're second to none. You are the best art department in the school system, in the county.
Congratulations. Next is the spotlight on the business department.
I'm Rick Mankabelli.
Here at the high school. Director of Business, Melissa.
Principal at CNS and Aaron Dever, Career Center.
At CNS.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. We really don't get a chance to brag about our department, and we really are proud of the program we've developed. First thing I'm going to show you, I'll try to make it as quick as I can because I know we don't have a lot of time. We have very short video clips. Our college credit program, we offer about 18 credit hours through Supa and through SUNY. Any credits are free, or they were last year, I'm not sure if they're going to be again this year. But they, by having, especially the Supa, it gives us outstanding staff development through, especially with, you know, best professors in the country. It raises the bar for our students because it's more, gives them a jumpstart in college. They can really benefit from the program and, of course, we developed iPads last year. Department with the tech department to get this course up and running, we brought in outside money to make it happen, and this is our second semester class, and it's really, it's going well. Couple glitches here and there with the technology, but for the most part, we're learning to work around the system to make it work for us. Having fun with it too, and they're learning. The class, it is a productivity tool as well. It's not just for surfing, and so executives, you know, on airplanes, doctors, teachers a class, a grad class, using the iPad for marketing purposes.
Second new class that we, with video game design and, and the first two bullets illustrate why we started it, because I think it's our job is, I think, to assume that the department should stay on top of trends and size the millions of dollars the industry brings in and the growing career. It actually happens in the class, and I use the word trick because.
That's what Randy Pausch at Carnegie Mellon, who was the author of the last lecture, if you read that book, he's the one that came up with their design, the software, which is Alice, which the class uses, and he used it to try to trick people into learning computer programming. And it's a three-dimensional virtual reality animated format, and the reason why I use the word trick in parentheses is because they're doing parameters and loops and logic and true false statements where they're actually learning math, but in a format that really appeals to the high school student. In addition, they're learning real-world physics because they have to work in three dimensions. Besides that, it is a stepping stone class for some of Matt Harbinger's math courses at the high school because they are learning JavaScript just in an easier format. So that's what the trick is, and it's been real successful for the 100 students that have taken it so far this year. I think what separates our department, like Mr. Crabtree said, with our art department, which I agree with, and why I think that we're the best department in the state, is what also happens outside of the classroom. We do a lot outside of our classroom and bring the outside community in, which is what Rick will talk about in a moment. One of the things we do is, there's four of us that are advisors of DECA, which is a marketing management club. It's got under 200,000 people nationwide in DECA. It's a rostered club, so they have to pay dues to be in. CNS and junior high DECA have done extremely well at the competitions. As you see there, over 100 members between the two schools, several winners, and we'll be going on to state competition next week to hopefully represent the region and our school at state competition against about 2,000 other business students. We run the biggest blood drive in Central New York for high schools, and we also do work with the Lions Club as part of Community Connections, which Rick will talk about in a second. Another thing we do outside of the classroom that makes us stand out is a one-of-a-kind leadership program, which Tony Broccoli actually spoke at it three years ago on stress management. And the leadership class at CNS, which is juniors and seniors, which was started four years ago, Tony was one of the first speakers at it on stress management, and we were in the lecture hall across in the library in 246. The program's expanded so much, we can only have the seminars in the auditorium, and there are four topics that the juniors and seniors come up with that are in leadership class, and this year, the four topics are on the board. We've already done two of them. The picture is Donna DeTodda from the Post Standard, who Bree Stewart was able to book. The students book the speakers, they choose the seminars, and over 200 students attend these seminars, which help them develop some sort of skills or touch on topics that aren't necessarily spoken about in our curriculum. If they attend seminars from sophomore year, three out of four per year, if they do a final project completely on their own that helps out the community, they are awarded a blue, royal blue leadership cord at graduation, and the class also keeps track of who gets that recognition at graduation. So it's truly a student-run program that the leadership class does in addition to just the curriculum within the class. A few years ago, we started a business honor study through the Business Teachers Association of New York State. We do it for juniors because we'd like them to put something on their college application and resume. They have to take a certain amount of business courses. In addition to that, they have to have a certain GPA overall and in the business courses. So it's more of a recognition we do, not necessarily a club. And now, what I talked about bringing the outside into our classroom and helping out our community will be Rick.
Thank you. If you want to be an entrepreneur, and I'm going to skip down to the second bullet because I think it's one of the most important things we do at our school. If you want to be an entrepreneur at CNS, you're in luck because Linda Dwyer has some phenomenal network connections in our community. Well, for starters, she brings her kids to the dinosaur barbecue every year and meets up with John Stage, probably one of the most successful entrepreneurs on the East Coast. And he does a great Q and A with the kids, and it's just an invaluable experience. You see the picture up at the top right, that's from a trip to the dinosaur. He really gives back, and Linda has a great connection with him, and she's had one for quite some time now. Another great connection she has is with Paul Ross, who owns a number of McDonald's. The kids go over, again, they do a great Q and A with Paul, and he too gives back wonderfully. And it's invaluable experience for the kids to see how local people have been able to do it, and how they've been able to take their entrepreneurial spirit and run with it, and she does a great job with it. Something I do, and Ms. Y in the sports marketing class, is we take our kids and we market the spring football game. There is a professor up at SU, her name's Gina Pauline, and we work with her to come up with marketing strategies to help market the game within the district, within the community, and for, as a prize, actually, as a little nugget for us for doing that, she allows us to go up to the, she takes us on a little trip up to the dome. Last year, we got an inside view of the dome, we talked to a lot of the inside people there that showed us how the inside works of the dome works, all the kiss cam, all that stuff you see when you go to the dome. We found out how all that stuff works, really fascinating for the kids. And this year, or this past, that was two years ago, sorry. This past year, we got to go to the Carmelo Center, which was incredible, and we saw that place. That place really is phenomenal, the kids loved it. Third bullet down, Cicerone Elementary Computer Project. Sharon Harding behind me, she takes her kids over to the Cicerone Elementary, she brings over some computers with her computer technology class, and they take the computers apart, they work with them, the kids see how the innards of the computer works, and I think that is a great experience for them. She does a nice job with that. Dress for Success. Now Dress for Success is a project that the junior high kids do, it's great. They have a, they strive to have the kids come to school once a month dressing for a job they'd like to get rather than the one they have now. So that whole idea of dressing better than need be, and they try to do that once a month, and she has a goal, I'm sorry, every year, a men's warehouse rep comes in and shows the kids how to tie a tie. So she's got that community connection with the men's warehouse. Now, I have a note here that just clicked off because my screen's there. The fashion show, that's what I want to talk about. These are junior high things, so I had to make myself a note because I couldn't remember exactly what they did. The junior high, the fashion show they do is a junior high project too that's sponsored by Boon Babies. It's run during the lunches, and the kids come in, Boon Babies comes in and helps the kids with their fashion ideas, and it's actually ones being held this Thursday. Tiffany wanted me to mention that in case you guys want to stop by and see it. Next slide. This one's a video.
Twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, we're covering up on twenty years of stag and again. So what do you think the next step is?
Yeah. I shouldn't say that. That is Nick Hendry. He's one of my, is he here? I heard some kids laughing, they must know him. Nick is in my Wall Street class, and the investment club slide is all about what we do in Wall Street, what we do in the investment club. Now, what Nick was saying there is, we have, he's looking at the lifetime chart for the Dow, and how there was some stagnant and growth and stagnant and growth, and we predicted what was going to happen next, and that's the whole idea of the investment club. In Wall Street, we, I try to teach kids that there is some financial information you need to look at before you just pick stocks, not just to pick them. Look at financial health, chart things, try to analyze the charts, and from there, we decide what portfolios to create, how to create them, and that's kind of what Nick was illustrating there. The investment club is a club where kids can expand on that knowledge. We do it in Wall Street class, but once Wall Street class is over, it's half semester, or it's a half-year class, once that class is over, the kids are allowed to continue, if they'd like, in this investment club. And it starts up in a couple weeks, and a couple kids, I was showing a couple kids this slide today, and they're excited. The kids are excited. Kids that like finance love to compete in portfolio contests with each other. So it's been successful over the last couple of years.
Okay, so the Career Center, well, we know with all the budget cuts and with Ellie gone, Erin Dever has taken over, and she's done a phenomenal job with limited resources to offer as much as she can possibly offer in the Career Center. She's doing the Job Shadow Program and helps students with scholarships and Career Day. I mean, she really has done a lot with limited resources. The Star Shop, students that are in business classes are able to work in the bookstore, the Star Shop, during their lunches, during their study halls. They volunteer their time, and they earn some textbook reimbursement money for their efforts, and it helps with their college apps, but I'll just tap on this. There we go. Okay. Well, we have three students with video, we don't have the audio here, that are talking about, you know, one's a manager, and she's got an experience working in the bookstore that way. Another girl has learned to run the register and balance every day, and another girl, because of her experience with the bookstore, she put it on her application, and she got a job in retail. Okay, the Entrepreneurship Center. Dr. Melvin had suggested that it would be a good idea for us to have an Entrepreneurship Center, and so we worked with him and found some outside funding through Paul Ross, the owner of McDonald's, and set the center up right next to the Star Shop in the foyer at CNS, and students can come there during lunch and get, you know, expertise from a couple of the teachers, there are resources there, there's a computer there, their journals are there, if they want to start a business, if they currently own a business, or if their parents own a business. And you'd be surprised to see how many students actually run businesses in our school. So that's just one extra benefit that we offer. And our work-study program offers students the opportunity to work in the school and outside of the school and get some credit. I think, believe it's a half a credit or a full credit for their efforts.
I have a comment and a question. I'd like to ask about the junior high Career Center because I know that not only has CNS's Career Center taken a hit, but so has the junior high Career Center taken a hit. So where do we stand with Career Center at the junior high, and what does it look like now as opposed to what it did before?
The junior high Career Center is down to a .4. I'm in the classroom .6, and then I do, I run the Career Center .4.
Okay.
So on certain days, I have classes come in, and then I try to work with them on the days that I'm not there to make sure that they have the resources and that they can find the resources on the day that I'm not available because I'm in the classroom.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my comment is, yes, I did come in and was able to, was asked to come in and speak for the Leadership Program, and I had a wonderful time. It was a lot of fun. The room was packed with kids, and we had just a great time, and I could honestly use the stress management techniques these days. So I could benefit greatly from that. Thank you. It was fun. Thanks for having me, it was a good time. Good.
Cycling through the three.
Oh, perfect.
Trina Lechter just did it two years ago.
Oh, that's excellent.
Just doing assistant counseling.
Yeah. It's a great way for us out in the community to, you know, interact with the kids on a topic that they're interested in, obviously. Anytime we can get the kids to pick and choose the things that, you know, matter to them, then it makes all the difference in the world. So thank you for having me, it was a lot of fun.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Don, initial budget draft.
So, good evening. Donald and I are going to present to you tonight, and it's an initial review of our budget for 2012-2013. As we go through the budget, there are a couple key points that we want everyone to keep in mind. First being that North Syracuse Central School District has been struggling financially for at least the past three years. And more specifically, when you look at the data, revenue has continued to decline, costs have increased, our expenditures have been cut in the amount of about 200 positions, and the burden of funding our schools is shifting from state and federal government to local school taxpayers. The next important key point to keep in mind is that the 2012-13 budget is a continuation of the same story. Our initial budget represents the current budget with projected cost increases. Our revenues are projected to be down, as well as our costs are projecting to increase. And in our current situation, we will need to make deep cuts in our expenditures, and that is equivalent to about 95 additional positions. So when you think about the overall goal of this presentation, we want to ensure two major things. One that, one that the board as well as the community understand what our financial condition is, and that we're going to need to make some tough decisions about our programming. As I've said in the past, have the kind of courageous conversations that we need to
Let's start talking about revenues, and the purpose of this pie chart is to just, I'm going to talk about all the various revenues on the next slide, but I think what I want you to take away from this slide is that 40% of our revenues come from financial aid, and 57% come from the local taxpayers in the form of a tax levy. That's 97% of our revenues. So the next slide, basically, I want to talk through the individual components. First, maybe we'll start right at the bottom. So the budget we're in right now, the 2011-2012 budget, is $136.4 million. The budget for next year, that, our initial budget is $143.1 million. That's a $6.7 million increase, or 4.9%. Now, as Dr. Dice just said, what this represents is business as usual, doing all the same things we did this year, but with all the cost increases that we know about. So one of the things that, as we think about our revenues, that's important to note, is the changes. How are our revenues changing? So the first line on their general aid, that represents a decrease of $1.7 million. And I think when I last presented the And I think when I last presented the governor's budget to the board, you folks were aware that our aid increased 3.1%. Our aid to fund programs increased by $1.4 million. Well, unfortunately, in that general aid line that's going down $1.7 million, it shows our loss of federal jobs monies. We lost $3.2 million there. So that's our biggest reduction in aid. We also... You see the sales tax line there that's down to $430,000 for next year. Last year, that number was $1.7 million. Two years ago, it was $2.2 million. So we've really been hurt by the new sharing arrangement with the county. Our fund balance... Our fund balance, as I reported to the board, is about 2.8% of our budget. And we're only planning on using about $600,000 next year. So that's a million-dollar loss of revenue to fund operations. And then finally, our other revenues are down $1.2 million. And those other revenues represented... We were using money from our debt service fund that we had put into operations. We used $1.8 million in the 2011-2012 year. We're only going to use about $545,000 this year. So again, to take away from this slide, the most important thing is that the revenues that support student programs are down almost $4.5 million or 7.9%. Now, our building aid is up. That's the next line item. And that's to support the Smith Road project that we just completed. So in order to make this budget work, we would need to raise the tax levy by $9.2 million or 12.7%. Obviously, that's not a realistic expectation and so the discussion begins. The next slide. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Can you speak to why the rents are down $70,000?
Oh, sure. Sure. Our rents... That's good that you asked that question. Our rents represent rents for space that we rent to Bosse's as well as the rent we get from Main Street. And last year, when we estimated our rent at $451,000, we were a little high on what we got from Bosse's. So it's not that our... The amount of space really changed. The $381,000 is a more accurate reflection of what Bosse's needs are. That changes year to year, as you can imagine.
What other revenue represents?
Oh, sure. The biggest... In 2011-2012, the single biggest component in there, or more than half of it, is the amount of money we used from our capital... I'm sorry, from our debt service fund to fund operations. There's a variety of miscellaneous items in there that make up the balance, but that's the single biggest component and the only component that changed materially year to year, resulting in the $1.2 million reduction. Any others? Yeah?
Just to be clear, general aid is state aid or...
General aid is... It's all of our state aid. If you look at the number, 47.7 million, that's all state aid. But last year, the 49.4 million, that included $3.2 million of federal jobs money. But generally, general aid is just state aid.
Sales tax money goes away totally in 2013.
Yeah. Well, what happens is it diminishes. It continues to diminish. We're going to lose probably, you know, several hundred thousand dollars more in the next couple of years. Now, the other side of that is if the economy picks up and we have strong sales in the county, there'll be more money to go around. You know, what we saw in 2011-2012 was a continuation of, you know, a soft economy and the sharing agreement going into effect.
Wasn't... Didn't sharing agreement go down to zero?
I think it goes... No, it doesn't go to zero, but it goes pretty low. I mean, you know, it goes pretty low. Again, to put it in perspective, two years ago, we had $2.2 million in that lineup. So it was a real big hit to schools.
Yeah, no. I thought it went away totally after next year.
No. It goes to a minimum amount for each school district.
Dropping back to a point that maybe we made in our first pie chart and a comment that Kim mentioned in her opening statements, the burden of funding schools is shifting from the state and federal government to the local school taxpayer. And the purpose of this chart is to just look at those two components. And if you look at the 2008-2009 year, you see that state and federal aid was 46.9% and the local levy was 47.6%. Kind of, you know, they reached paying about the same. Well, as you move forward in the years, you see that the state and federal aid as a percentage of our total budget declines while the local levy increases. And that's at the heart of the matter of some of the challenges we've had in terms of managing revenues here at North Syracuse. Let's switch to expenditures. I'm going to show you two pie charts. The first is expenditures by category. And the purpose of this chart, I want to make, you know, maybe the main point is that 72% or 103, over $103 million supports instruction. And there are four other pieces to the pie. You know, we've got a lot of properties. We've done a lot of capital projects and we've bought a lot of buses over the years. So we have $11.6 million worth of debt service. And you saw in the revenue slide that we're getting aid that supports those mortgages as well. We spent about $12.7 million in transportation. We spent about 3.6 in central support. And M&amp;O, that's our maintenance and operation of all of our facilities. That's about 11.8. But the biggest piece of the pie is instruction, as it should be. The next... This is the same expenditures, just sliced a different way. Now, we're making the point about the types of expenditures, where we spend our money. Salaries represents 49% of our expenditures and benefits 28. So that's 77% of our budget goes toward personnel costs. A couple of other big slices, starting at the bottom there, you see contractual at 7.3. A full third of that is utilities. Believe it or not, our textbooks at about $600,000 is in there. You know, things like that. Anytime we have a repair done by a non-employee, whether it be a piece of equipment, anything at our transportation or M&amp;O organization, anytime we bring in a contractor for any regular repair and maintenance, it goes into contractual. Bosse's is $10.2 million. We continue to work closely with Bosse's because remember what the purpose of Bosse's is. It's where people get together, cooperate, and try to achieve two things. One is economies of scale and the other is pooling expertise. And so one thing that North Syracuse should really be commended on is they've really worked very closely with Bosse's to try to maximize that opportunity to harvest expertise as well as achieve economies of scale. And to that point, we get 76% aid on everything we push through Bosse's. So, you know, we look really hard at opportunities to work closely with Bosse's. Again, debt service is on this slide as well. But the big takeaway, 77% of our costs are people. And now to look at expenditures kind of by line item and talk about some of the variances. You know, you see our salaries are going up 1.85%. That's in anticipation of a couple of things. One is, you know, our employees have certain steps. They reach certain years of service. They get additional compensation. And then we're obviously... We're in negotiations with all of our bargaining units, whether we're in right now or soon to be. And so we're anticipating some increase in compensation as a result of that. Benefits are up 9%. You know, we continue to do some pretty innovative things with our self-insurance plan to manage benefit costs, but they're up. We're projecting them to be up. Debt service is up and that entire $1.2 million is Smith Road. Our Bosse's is up slightly and a lot of that is our need... Increasing needs on the special education side. And we're working closely with our director to understand those costs better. But as I said earlier, we continue to work with Bosse's so that we can achieve those economies of scale and expertise that we need. And again, this expense side, just like the revenue side, equals 143, 186, 335 and/or an increase of about 4.9%. Oh, good question. So as you know, last year, you were on a contingency budget. So under a contingency budget, you really can't spend much on equipment. Now, we had some specific equipment purchases that were identified for 1112 that were critical to the operation. You can imagine if you've got a piece of equipment that's going to cost you more to repair than buy a new one, that's the kind of stuff that fell into that $269,000, some critical equipment needs. It's up 51% because we've held off on buying equipment for the last year. And frankly, the last three years, we've really been tight on equipment purchases because of the difficult financial environment. So some pent-up need. Any other questions on expenditures?
Now that we've gone through revenue, we are going to consider, as we look at cutting expenditures, one, that the cuts all need to be made before August 16th. At that point is when the board will do the adoption. That we can't cut mandated items required by law. That we're going to be working closely with our various labor, our unions to look at what are some of the changes that we can make to address some of the issues that we've already presented. Look at cutting expenditures. That also connects with possible staffing eliminations. And as we talked about in the previous slide, it can range between, I think it was 72, 75 positions and 95 positions. So if we increase the levy by 2%, then we would need to cut a minimum of 95 positions.
How many employees do we have in our school?
About 1,400.
1,400?
Continuing on with possible expenditure cuts. So when you look at teachers, if we're talking about cutting teachers, we all know that the last hired would be the first who are laid off. But we recognize that in cutting teachers, that will impact class size, although we know that we're going to have to stay within our contractual limits. Also, support staff, that our support staff have done an amazing job of doing more with less. But if we continue to cut support staff, we're going to have to look at how we do things differently. And last but not least, programs. Looking at programs that are not mandated by law and where can we cut there? And in the previous... At the last board meeting, we talked a little bit initially just about what has already been cut over the past couple of years. But the things that will continue to come to table or be presented as possible items to look at are athletic programs, extracurricular activities, and electives. So when you... What are some of the pressures that are driving us to change or driving us to change in the system? Got the financial pressure, which Bo Donald and I talked about, that we have shrinking federal and state aid, capacity for tax increases, fine with rising costs, fuel, healthcare, retirement. We also have academic pressures, which is a good pressure, but it's also, once again, putting pressure on the system to figure out how we can continue to... For example, the Common Core standards. And last but not least, human resources, our APPR, which is our new teacher and principal evaluation program. As the next slide, what are some of the things that North Syracuse Central School District has done to... Well, our 2011-2012 budget is 2 million less than our 2009-2010 budget. As we talked about in previous meetings, we're looking to develop a strategic plan to establish our direction. God bless you. And really ensure that the resources that we keep are truly aligned with the direction that we want to go in. The other thing that we're looking to do and have continued to do, collaborating with our employees in new and in different ways to meet challenges. So we recognize that the challenge is the challenge and we're up for it and that we're going to continue to provide a quality educational experience for our students. But in doing that, we all recognize that to do that, we have to come to the table and be willing to collaborate in a give-and-take conversation. The next thing that the budget process is also has incorporated this year is that we're having directors do a full overview of all of the district programs that are currently in place. And they're going to be providing us with data that shows how programs are doing, whether they're showing their benefits, whether they're not, talking about where can we redesign, where can we eliminate, where can we adjust accordingly. Once again, ensuring that everything is aligned with our strat plan. And last but not least, we're using technology to increase the efficiency effectiveness of all of our employees. And that goes to the question you just asked, Pat, in terms of why is the equipment line up? That there's some areas that we need to improve in and we're going to be looking to do that between... Also, we're actively identifying new opportunities to work with both. Donald has a number of meetings scheduled to begin to broach the conversation about what are some other things that we can do with Bosse's. At least meet somewhere in the middle and try and gain the benefits that we can financially from partnering with them. Also, continuing to improve the management of healthcare costs, so through self-insurance programs. Also, continuing to mandate relief from our governor and Albany legislators. At our legislative breakfast a couple of weeks ago, we had a number of meetings scheduled with local legislators to have the conversation about what North Syracuse is doing, what we need them to do to get the message out about the work that we're doing, the great stuff that we're doing, and the fact that we need to have some type of relief. And last but not least, sharing more information with the community. Working hard to make sure that the community understands our financial situation. And so our meetings are now televised. We're feeding information into our website. We're continuing to make presentations at the board meetings so that the community feels like they are a part of the conversation. We also had, if I remember correctly, two listening sessions and I believe another one scheduled. We've met with a number of our district committees. Last week, we met with the superintendent's advisory group where Donald presented information about where we currently are with our budget. And so we're really working to do that in hopes of building trust and letting the community know that we are trying to be as frugal as we can with our funding in a very strategic way and that hopefully, if they believe in the direction we're going, which is to go from good to great, and ensure that our students have a quality educational program, well-rounded program, that they will support the recommendations that we will be bringing forth to the board.
The board will then be addressing.
So let's recap, kind of, over the last three years. We've cut 15.2 million of expenditures. And so to break that down for you, we cut over $10 million in payroll, eliminated 200 full-time positions. The teachers, teaching assistants, directors, principals, middle managers, and non-affiliated administrators and secretaries effectively took a pay freeze. So we've had the support of our people. From a benefits perspective, we cut over $4.2 million. Then had we not eliminated the 200 FTE positions and implemented the mail order prescription program and the Medicare Advantage Plan, our benefits would have increased over 7.4 million. Our actual increase was 3.2, but we cut 4.2 to help manage those costs. And to put it in perspective, healthcare costs have increased over 19.5% in the last three years. TRS has increased from 7.63% of payroll to 11.2% of payroll or 46.8%. That's our teacher retirement system. Our employee retirement system is up over 97.5%, 8% to 15.8%. And I want to put a caveat in here just to put this in perspective. The stock market hasn't done very well. Our New York State retirement system is a fully funded system. And so, you know, when the stock market doesn't do well, it requires greater contributions to keep up with things. Now, when the market was doing very well, schools were funding the pension at a very low rate because we were kind of riding the market. But we're on the dark side of that right now. It's been a tough run in the market and as a result, costs have increased significantly over the last three years. And in addition, the district has made other cuts in athletics, co-curricular, energy, supplies, transportation, staff development of over $1 million. To put it in perspective, we've really... The team has worked really hard on energy contracts. We've cut about $300,000 in the last three years in energy costs. Transportation, we did the bus rerouting last year. That was $150,000. You know, we've... I'm sure anybody that's involved in athletics and co-curricular knows the cuts that were made there and they were pretty deep. And so over $1 million in those other areas have been cut. So the tax cap, I brought my copy of Sunday's paper. I think everybody probably read that a 2% tax cap isn't really... Doesn't really mean that it's capped at 2%. And... And, and that was in the cover of Sunday's Post Standard. I'd like to walk you through this calculation one more time. This is, I've updated it for the latest information we have. I was at a meeting today where the school business officials were going through the calculation with Questar Three, which is a state aid planning group that we're a member of. And just to make sure we had the right calculation. And so the concept of the tax cap is to limit schools levy increase to an appropriate amount. And we go through a standard formula. Last year's levy, the first number on the chart, was seventy-two point seven million dollars. Our tax base has grown slightly and so we multiply it by a tax base growth factor that the state provides us. And then what we do, I'm going to ignore the pilots for a minute and just talk about the levy for capital. When we do our capital projects, we put them out to the public and they vote on every project. And so what, what this calculation is attempting to do is, is look at the increase in the local share of the, of those debt service costs. So last year, we had capital costs of two point two million dollars. So you subtract that out and down below, you see we're adding the costs of three point four million dollars. That, that difference is primarily Smith Road. And so what the state is saying is your voters already voted on the, on the, on the various capital projects. You should be able to increase your levy by the amount to support the projects that have already been supported by your community. In the center of the calculation, you see that there are a lot, this is the allowable levy growth factor. So other than the pilot and the capital and the ERS increase that I talked about a little while ago, you can only increase two percent. But when you do the math, according to the state's calculation, they're saying we should be allowed to increase our levy by three point four million dollars or four point seven eight percent. That's the amount that the state thinks we need to increase our levy to continue to keep our head above water. And that's, that's why a two percent tax cap isn't really a two percent cap.
Do you explain to. What a pilot or a payment.
Oh, sure. So when a business moves into your town, they're, they want some incentives. So they ask the community for a pilot agreement, which is a payment in lieu of tax agreement. And so what, what happens is you agree with that business that they don't have to pay taxes, but they do have to make this payment. And so those payments are divvied up among the school and the town and, and the other tax entities. And in our case, last year, we collected three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars from these pilot agreements. This year, we're only going to collect two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Now, that's not necessarily bad news. That means that the pilot agreement has expired and now they're back on the tax rolls paying school taxes. And so what this formula is intending to do is consider the impact of pilots as, as we calculate the levy increase.
And the county is who negotiates the pilot agreement. The school district or the towns and villages, we don't negotiate it. The county negotiates it and approves it and then says, school district, town, village. This is the pilot agreement, this is what you have to do.
Right, and it's interesting, good that you made that point because sometimes what they do is they look at the resources that these businesses require. And often, the school tax, the portion we get of the pilot is, you know, a lesser share than you might think we should get, given what the tax bill will be once they come back on the rolls.
We really have no choice when we're.
Unless we contest it and, but it's very difficult for us to weigh in.
Very difficult.
But people have to know is that it's a fraction of what we would get for that property or that business if they were paying the full shot. This is an incentive allowing them to get established and pay a lower rate, but we get a lower rate, as do the towns.
And it's interesting, depending on what towns are doing kind of back on this tax cap. Most schools are north of two percent, many are in the three percent range. And so as we've talked to other districts, as they look at their exclusions, the pilot, the amount spent on capital, that local share and the, and the ERS retirement contributions, it's pushing most schools over two percent. That's the, that's the tax levy. So let's talk about what it means to us, this, this budget. So this is a chart that you, you saw last year and probably have seen many years. It, it looks at, it looks at, and again, I'll go back to, you know, this is business as usual, doing all the things we've been doing with, with the current cost increases we know about. So this is not a request for a twelve point seven percent increase, but this is what it would look like. So as you know, the towns of Cicero and Salina are full value assessment towns. So a house assessed, I'm sorry, they're assessed at full value. So a hundred thousand dollar house in all of our towns would, would have the following taxes. In Cicero would be twenty-three seventy, that would be your tax rate per thousand, twenty-three dollars and seventy cents. In Clay, because they don't have full value, a hundred thousand dollar house in Clay is assessed at about four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Their rate per thousand would be five hundred and forty-eight dollars or sixty-four cents. Salina is a full value assessed town and their rate would be twenty-three seventy, just like Cicero. But at the end of the day, when you do all the math, a hundred thousand dollar house in Cicero, Clay, and Salina would all pay the same estimated annual school tax bill of twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-three seventy. And that would be a tax increase of two hundred and sixty-eight dollars over last year if we increased your taxes or the tax levy by twelve point seven percent. The, the next chart, I know there's a lot here, so bear with me. The next chart attempts to talk about the tax levy. I've shown, I showed this at an earlier meeting. Levy increases of anywhere from one percent to ten percent. If you notice, the two hundred and sixty-eight dollars isn't even on this chart or the twelve point seven percent, I'm just going from one to ten. Let's focus on the four point seven eight, that's our tax cap. That would allow us to increase our revenues from local taxpayers by three point four million dollars. We would still need to cut five point eight million dollars. Since we're operating at the tax cap level, we would only need a simple majority, that's one more yes vote than no vote. And the increase on a hundred thousand dollar house would be a hundred dollars instead of the two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So that's, that gives you perspective and it gives you the range of, of, of increases in taxes that one of our taxpayers may expect. I want to emphasize that the school doesn't play a role in assessments or in equalization rates. We just focus on calculating our levy and then putting it in front of the public and, and in this form.
Playing a super majority.
Sure, the super majority. So the way the state formula works is they said, listen, we calculated this formula, this is what we think your maximum tax levy increase should be. If you go over that, you need sixty percent of your voters to approve your budget in order for it to pass. And, and I'm glad you asked that follow-up question, Pat, because if our budget fails, we can put it up for vote again one more time. So if it fails and we, and we don't get a simple majority and we're at the cap or below, or below, we can put it out again at a lower rate. If it fails again, we get a zero percent increase. There's no increase for the school district if it fails twice. There's no such thing as a contingency budget anymore. If you put a budget out and say we went to the taxpayers and said we wanted a six percent increase and we don't get a super majority, if you don't get sixty percent, the vote fails. You could get a majority and it still fails. And so that's the way it works this year, it's a different process.
And if it fails twice and you have a zero percent tax increase, how much would we have to cut?
We have to cut nine point two million dollars.
Out of the budget.
Which would be.
Which is catastrophic.
Which would be about two hundred positions.
It's a lot, we'd probably be cutting positions and we'd be throwing everything overboard we possibly could. That would be a very bad scenario. Yeah, I'm moving pretty fast. Are there any other, any other questions on the numbers?
So I assume if we had to go. Go through the budget process again and see how we can change things.
Probably like every other, you know, town, you'd probably go through and solicit from the voters, what didn't you like about the budget and make adjustments and.
Go out at a lower increase or changing maybe what's cut and what's not cut and then putting it out there.
I just, if you could comment on a couple of things. You commented on the mandates that we have, that we have no say in, we have to pay. Would you comment on this very simple school funding formula and how that affects North Syracuse Central School District?
Are you, are you referring to the gap elimination?
You know, the way that certain schools get funding in the, in the state.
Well, yeah.
Real simple, in simple terms, how we don't.
As everybody knows, I mean, and even in our county, there's a continuum of, of schools from the wealthiest districts that are less dependent on state aid. They have a relatively low free and reduced rate. You know, our combined wealth ratio in, in North Syracuse is below, it's a point six. It's, it's relatively low. Put it in perspective, you know, Skinny Atlas is a one point five. And, and the state average is one. The state average is one. And so we're below, we are a less wealthy district. We have a thirty percent free and reduced lunch rate. You know, a town like Marcellus has a ten percent free and reduced lunch rate. So that's the first factor is how dependent are you on state aid? Because if you're dependent on state aid and it gets cut, it hurts you more than it hurts a wealthier district. I, I reported to the board in our last meeting that we have a two point eight percent fund balance. That's the fund balance as a percentage of our budget. Some towns have a four percent, that's the maximum you can have in the state. Some towns actually have more than four percent in reserves. So when, instead of making cuts, they can kind of spend money in the bank and wait for things to get better. And some of, those are some of the factors we're struggling with, but the way schools are funded right now, the wealth, the poorest districts are hurt the hardest. And that's why when we met, we recently, we did the legislative breakfast, as Dr. Dice mentioned, and we met with Don Miller recently, a group of us and, and Dr. Dice as well. And we're, we would love to see the state turn the competitive grants. The governor came out with his budget and I mentioned in the last meeting that two hundred and fifty million of it is put aside for competitive grants. We'd like to see them turn that into regular aid because that would really help us a lot in, in closing the gap.
I think it's important to mention too, that those competitive grants automatically. Exclude districts of a certain size, districts with a certain level of achievement, whatever, so that that pool of money is harder to get. And, and last year's pool of money has not even been awarded yet.
The, the applications just went in for the first fifty million of the two fifty and we were not able to qualify.
Well, it's, it's like a, it's like in, in the public sector and some business. Tell you, you have an incentive program, but the bar and all the requirements for the incentive program are such that nobody can ever reach them. So they have this pool of money sitting there that nobody can achieve and nobody. One of the things that, that I think the, the general theme has been relative to trying to develop a strategic plan and involving parents and teachers and. All the workers within our district, students. Districts in New York State that don't get hurt when state aid is cut are the districts that aren't as dependent on state aid as others. That's not to say that, you know, you know, some of those districts are extremely wealthy districts, others are medium wealth districts. One of the things that, that we are, we tried to do last year and we're going to continue to try to do is make our community realize that, that we put out a really good product here. We have a really good group of teachers, we have great buildings, we have great kids, we have good programs. And that it's time, well, as you come to these budget meetings and as you look at this, it, it's time for us to differentiate ourselves among other districts and determine what it is that we're willing to pay for relative to our education. I mean, a, a zero percent increase would just devastate our school district. You can't, you can't teach kids and you can't get results if you don't have teachers and you don't have assistants and, and you don't have social workers and you don't have guidance counselors and you don't have security officers and you don't have football and basketball and all of the things that every study that all of us read and all of us look at say that those are the things that make our kids great, that help our kids to be great. So during the course of these next eight to ten weeks, we're going to try to impress upon everyone how important it is for us to determine what it is that we want. You know, it's, it's, it's your school district also. You have to decide what programs that you, you want and what we all want our school district to look like and then what it's going to cost to, to pay for that. We're at the, we're at ground zero. You know, we're, we, we, for the last three or four years have been, have been struggling with what we can save and how we can do the best we can for our kids. And, and cutting people isn't the, the right thing. That's the worst thing you could possibly do. Cutting the kind of programs where kids can have a TV studio and they do announcements like, like CNN and, and having, having a student be able to, to pretty much think of what they might like to do and be able to do it. You know, you can't, you can't do that and cut, you know, five million dollars out of a budget. We can, I can assure you that, that the decisions that we struggle with here, around this table, we lose a lot of sleep. You know, we, we, the, the fact that I can go in the grocery store and, and have to look at a person that I know and I had to vote to cut their job, there's nothing more heartbreaking for any one of us than that. That's the last thing that we want to do.
We also know that there's more in the community that are not raising children than are raising children. So not only do we have to decide what we can afford and what we're willing to pay, but we have to do a sales job to everybody else and an education job so that they understand why it's important that this, their taxes are going up and why it's important that to them, it might be the difference between their medication and food, but that our, our, our school district is in desperate need of these funds. So it is, it is quite a challenge ahead of us.
I mean. There, there is no way that, that you're not going to pay school taxes. Children have to be educated. If there's children that live in your community, they have to be educated, whether it's here, whether it's at a private school, whether it's at some form of combined mega school district that includes Liverpool, Bolansville, Syracuse, you know. I mean, we have a really good, good thing here. As, as many people that come from the outside, I think all of us inside know that. But we just have to figure out what the best way to educate our kids is, the most cost-effective way, and then commit to that and, and figure out how we can move forward. Any other questions?
Yeah, we'll go through, if I could take you through the calendar real quick. So the budget process timeline is February sixth, we had a board meeting where we talked about fund balance, the governor's budget proposal and the tax levy cap. Some of that we touched on tonight. Tonight, we looked at our initial budget, business as usual with the increases we know about and the reductions we know about. We updated the tax cap. Since February tenth and through March second, we're going to be going through a process, a formal process of program review that Dr. Dice described a little while ago. We're soliciting suggestions from our principals and we're trying to incorporate that into our budget process. On the budget meeting, on the board meeting of the fifth and on the twelfth, our directors will be presenting their budgets. These are the specific areas like transportation, M and O, technology and, and whatnot. And, you know, these are areas where we spend a fair amount of money in support of the instructional process and, and we'll be, we'll be talking about those in great detail. March nineteenth through the eighteenth is when the board's going to be deliberating about the budget, trying to figure out how to make those hard trade-offs and to figure out what that, the right tax levy is to ask the community to support. And on the sixteenth of April, the, the board will adopt a budget. We'll have a formal budget hearing on the eighth. At that point, the decisions are made, we're kind of locked and loaded and we're presenting that budget one more time to the community. And then on the fifteenth is the budget vote. Calendar.
And last but not least, just to recap, that we truly need the support of the community as we move forward with this process. A minimum tax levy increase of four point seven eight. And it's important to note that that tax cap limit is established by the governor and the legislature. That deep cuts and expenditures are not avoidable. We're going to need to have the courageous conversations around what goes away. And it connects with the courageous conversation that the community is going to need to have in terms of what they value as most important in meeting the needs of our North Syracuse Central School District students and families. That we will continue to need the support of our employees. That we will continue to need the support of our employees. They've been doing more with less, and now we're going to have to focus on how we do things differently. And last but not least, in the midst of all of this, we want to walk away with everyone still recognizing that this is an amazing place to be and that North Syracuse, there's still a bright spot for North Syracuse. We need to continue to push, push, push. That revenues must be restored, and we need to continue to transition to a lower-cost model. And we are truly in the process of doing that. So thank you.
I just would add one more thing, you know, that I think we also have to advocate for to our legislators, and that's a more equitable distribution of the state aid that we do receive. Not only terms of this grant money that we'd like to see come back into the pool, but how aid is equitably distributed, because it is not, and despite winning a suit that the campaign for fiscal equity, you know, put on, was, it was an empiric victory. You know, they, they won the case but lost the money that they were supposed to get and we all were supposed to get as a result of, of that decision. Third bullet in there.
Well, to touch on what Sandy's saying, too, the education process of our assembly, you know, I want to say thank you for you guys meeting with them, but, you know, one of the names that I didn't hear, maybe it was just overlooked, but Phil Cleary, who was he? It's not just us as board members and administration, but, you know, our teachers' union really is.
Actually, they were in that meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm thanking them because I didn't hear them mentioned.
I'd like to thank the two of you. Don, you've only been here about a month, maybe a little over a month, and Dr. Dice, believe it or not, a little over six months, I believe, come and do a great presentation. So I think you made it in terms that the community, the young people can understand and go back, and I thank you for that.
Lot to digest, but we're able to do it.
Come on up, participation in government, students will sign your stuff.
Oh, my God, look at that. Look at all you kids. Oh, my God.
Where would you like this sign? Oh, I was going to say.
Thank you for coming.
Oops, sorry. Been a big rush here. Sorry.
Okay. Let's see, today's the 27th.
Anybody else? Anybody else, guys? You need anybody?
I was going to just point at something, but I couldn't think of it.
It's a door outside, rain or snow? Sitting there? Your track, huh? See you soon. Outside, right?
Drive slowly.
Oh, they all want the superintendent. They all want the superintendent to sign. They all want the superintendent to sign. It's awesome. I, I think they probably do. We're not on the top 10. Very, it's a lot to digest, but you explained it.
Your hand long enough to give me that Coke? Thank you. I think it's time I change my drink.
You ready? Okay. Do I need to know about this? There are no comments from the audience?
Comments?
Okay. No comments from the audience? Okay. Any board committee reports or comments? I would just like to make a comment regarding the CNS after the ball party. For as long as I can remember, back years and years and years and years, CNS High School has done a party for the seniors after their senior ball. And it's been at many different locations over the years and run by many different people over the years, and starting with Bill Brown and switching over to me for a few years, and then CNS Students Against Destructive Decision-Making has had it for the last four years, and they've done it at Driver's Village. In fact, we were at Driver's Village before the senior ball was at Driver's Village. They came and joined us. What I'm hearing this year is that there's a little bit, of course, with everything else that's going on on the planet, there's been a little bit of an issue with financial situation regarding the after-the-ball party. Not sure what's going on with the senior class with that, but the reality of it is, is for years now, we've had an issue with support regarding that particular activity. And I think the time has come, not only financially, but the community as a whole needs to look at the after-the-ball party and decide whether it's something that they're willing to support, whether it be in volunteers, whether it be in donations, whether it be in helping to run it, or whatever the case may be. We're at a turning point with that particular activity. And unless we come as a community to the realization that unless somebody steps up to really take ownership and take pride in that activity and being there for the senior class on one of those nights when they do make very risky choices, that is just going to disappear. And the first time something serious happens in this community, we're going to come out of the woodwork and go nuts about why we didn't do something to be there for our kids after their senior ball. So, as a community, I think we need to look at it. If anybody has any ideas or would like to offer some support or a strategic plan for the after-the-ball party, please contact Sarah Vilnav at CNS High School. She's a health teacher there, and her group is coordinating the after-the-ball party. But I think it's something that, not only does CNS take ownership in, but the community as a whole has to look at that, that particular activity and say, yes, it's something that we support, yes, we're willing to step out of our comfort zone, yes, we are willing to be there for it, or it's going to disappear. And then, where will we be? So that's my soapbox. I will get off of it. Thank you.
Okay. Comments from the audience this evening? Do you have any board committee reports?
Are you taking general comments?
We don't, we, you have to sign up to make comments. It was up there. It's up next to the agendas. Well, you could, you can come up, you can come up, sign your name afterwards, and you fill it out. No problem. Your name?
Gilgo Bieski.
Okay.
I kind of guess I picked the wrong meeting to come here tonight. It's not that the budget's not important to me, because it is. I've got something that's a little more pressing from me, myself, and I know for a lot of other people in this community and for this school. I'm a longtime resident of Cicero, father of three boys who've come through or attending CNS schools, past president and coach for 15-plus years of Cicero Falcons, Pop Warner, active community member, advocate, and a registered voter. I'm here with one of my sons, Nicholas, who's a starter on our JV football team. I'm here on behalf, on his behalf, and then any other player who may come through this CNS football program. Before I start out, I'm here to ask the board or superintendent, whoever's decision it was to keep the varsity leadership the same, to reconsider this decision. I want to read your mission statement for the Cicero North Syracuse School District. The district, the community is committed to ensuring that all students achieve success through relevant and rigorous schoolwork, preparing them for a lifelong learning of full participation in our society while empowering them with the knowledge, skills, and attitudes valued by students and society at large. All right, I ask you, think of this statement, and related to athletics, because after all, we've heard it time and time again, that athletics and scholastics go hand in hand. I first would like to ask who or whom is not responsible for firing the head coach two years ago? Was it Dr. Melvin, or was it this board?
Can't really, us.
Okay, I'll assume that it's this board. All right? To this board, I want to thank you. All right? You robbed my son, Joseph, who was a senior this year, of achieving any success that your mission statement says. Past season has been an embarrassment, as it has been of nine of the last 10 seasons. Were any of you guys at these football games this year? I've seen a few. All right? Not all.
I've gone to a lot of home games and away games.
Crabtree thinks of just about every game. All right? After the third or fourth loss, because they all kind of blend together, did anyone see the group of primarily our seniors out on the football field crying, totally devastated and embarrassed by their team's performance? Even as late as last night, I still have to console my son because he's so depressed on this season. You did that, not those kids. This board did that to those kids. After every loss, the kids were blamed for that loss. It was never a coaching problem. It was always the kids' problem. It was always their fault. Kids were told this week after week. However, any of us who have any sense of coaching know that that was not the case. This is the same group of seniors, same group of seniors that I've watched play football since they were five years old. 12-plus years these kids have been playing football together. Same group of kids who've won numerous local, state, and regional championships. They've had great years at the modified and JV level, and they are told this season is their fault. They were told that they didn't want it bad enough. That's what the coaching staff said week after week to these kids. Do you think having these key core senior players who've been playing together for 12 years, that that's a record that they should be proud of? Is that a record indicative of their talents? This is a team that came one game for making it to the national championship. One game. And they can only win one game at a varsity level? The head coach wants us to believe that this is cyclical. I've heard this come out of his mouth myself. This is what he said at this year's banquet, which is, which was a debacle in itself. I'm here to tell you that this is not cyclical. This is insane. It's insane that you're going to allow this to continue. Albert Einstein said, insanity is the act of doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Here again, with your decision, we're doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Since 2002, 10 years, the largest school in Section III, CNS, has had only one winning season. Just one. Are you satisfied with that? You put him back in as a head coach. You must be satisfied with that. Is that cyclical? I don't think so. Now let's jump forward to your decision this year. It was a decision, and you said you can't, you can't comment who brought him back. All right? I'm going to assume again that it's the board or Dr. Dice. I'm, you know, this is up for up to you guys. Have you guys even read the athletic director's review? What could have possibly been in that review that was positive? With a one-season season, with having only one winning season in 10 years, what could possibly be positive?
Excuse me. That isn't correct. I've got the program at home. I wish I had brought it. We've had winning seasons. The last two years have not been winning seasons. I didn't mean to interrupt, but it needs to be stated what the truth is.
I will, I will give you the truth. Crabtree, I have it right here.
I was at Corcoran two years ago when we-
Corcoran's a crossover game.
No, 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 no. This was a playoff game. You know, I just, I-
I understand, Bob, but this isn't the, this isn't the-
I'm sorry, I don't have the information tonight, but I have.
2011, we were 1-7. 2010, we were 3-6. 2009, we were 4-4. 2008, we were 4-5. 2007, which was our good year, we were 7-3. 2006, 4-5. 2005, 4-5. 2004, 4-5. 2003, 4-6. 2002, 1-6. That's our record. Those are our records. Has the board read any of the reviews from the parents? Any of the letters that has come to the superintendent or the athletic director?
Every single one.
Every single one. Again, what could have possibly been positive in those letters? All right? We've just lost six of the greatest coaches out there in this school district in Section III. Highly talented coaches, highly liked coaches by all the kids, and these coaches didn't walk away for a petty spat. It's because of poor leadership. Are you guys aware that the varsity leadership, who's supposed to be running this entire program, never once visited a lower-level practice? That leadership. Guys, you have to ask yourself these. I also know that some of our lower-level coaches have been contacted by other schools to go coach for them. So we could possibly believe losing six of the, six, seven very shortly of the best coaches we have. Maybe it falls in your budget? I don't know. But it's not fair to the kids. When these positions aren't filled, these positions aren't filled, who from this board of directors is going to go to every student athlete and apologize because you failed them? You failed them. These positions won't be filled. I know nobody to date has signed up for them yet, and nobody out of district will sign up for them either. You have all these open positions. Now, I've heard the argument that you can't fire them. I've heard it numerous times from different people. I have a problem with that. Let me ask you this. Superintendent or President Carbone, if you have a regents chemistry teacher who year after year after year fails students, leave that teacher a chemistry teacher, or do you make them a general science teacher?
Documentation at all, or that, then they have to stay where they are.
So my son, in this school district, could have the worst teacher out there, and this board and superintendent would do nothing about that. Is that what you're saying?
Not that we won't, it's that we can't.
You can't.
Legally, we, not. If there is no documentation in there whatsoever that state that that person had issues over the course of a year, or 10 years, or five years-
So a failing record, failing record is not documentation?
Not that can legally get someone to remove. No, it isn't.
Then let's not, let's say we don't remove them. Make them a general teacher. You have six positions open.
I just want to point out that some of this conversation is exactly personnel items.
All right, I'm going to move, I'm just going to move on. I'm just going to move on.
Just because of open meetings, I-
Well, we didn't say anything. We said that-
All right, two coaches that come to my mind, right off the top of my head, that have been removed by their school boards, Bill Poloski from Camden and Bert Conklin from Central Square. Two very good coaches, both removed because of their record, because of their performance. So to say we can't remove a coach because of a performance, I have a problem believing that. We're talking nine years of bad performance. I know for a fact right now that there are a lot of parents, student athletes, alumni, community supporters, booster supporters, who are outraged over this decision. I'm just the tip of the iceberg. Since this was just brought out, we just found out about this, and this was all kept quiet. I can assure you, I will not keep this quiet. Every one of you will soon be faced with these outraged folks. They, like me, will be demanding answers. Once the media's involved, you're going to have to answer to the community. And it's going to be tough now with your budget, because now you're going to have to answer for this. I would like to close out with a few statistics. Statistics don't lie, they tell the true story. These statistics, as Mr. Crabtree was doubting what I said, maxpreps.com is a website you can find all high school statistics on. CBS Sports webpage attracts high school sports. Our varsity record over 10 years is 36 and 42. That's a losing record. That's not cyclical, as we've been asked to believe. Other schools in Section III Division I, comparable in size, demographics, over the same 10-year period, Liverpool's 47 and 44. That's between two different coaches. Beville is 65 and 32 with one coach, and West Jenny is 48 and 44 between two coaches. Liverpool's 47-44. That's between two different coaches. Beville is 65-32 with one coach. And West Jenny is 48-44 between two coaches. Again, are you guys satisfied with that performance? Another statistic. New York State, CNS is ranked 355th. 355th. With a school our size and a pool of our kids out there and very successful feeder programs from Pop Warner to JV, parental and community support, 355 is disgusting. And again, it's an embarrassment. Schools of comparable, comparable size, Liverpool's ranked 120th, Beville is 136th, and West Jenny is 23. And we are 355. One school that's been in the paper a lot this year at the beginning of the season regarding their troubled football program has been Fowler High School in the city. One of the poorest city schools in the state. A school that has struggled daily with keeping a team together, a team that had to have cleats donated because the kids couldn't afford them. Or have a mother or father to ask. Some of these players were even homeless. So, what does Fowler have to do with anything? Fowler is state-ranked 357. Two tenths of a point below us. That's don't lie. They just tell the story. We have some of the most talented players this year and collectively the best team ever to play together. They have been playing together since they were five years old. But that stat tells me that we are on the same playing field as a team who can't even afford cleats. I want you to think about that. Not wrong, Mr. Crabtree.
No, no, I'm, we're, we're talking about something else. I apologize.
My closing statement, I'd first ask who is responsible for keeping the varsity coach. It's up to you guys to figure out who that is. With this season coming up-
That's us.
With this season coming up, with the seniors out on that field when they're crying and they're embarrassed and dejected because it's the same old story as years past, I, as a parent, a taxpayer, and a CNS supporter, am going to expect you to be out on the field to console those kids. I other, I, as long as every other parent, are going to hold you responsible.
I just have one question. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
At the end of the season-
It's the policy of this board has been, for the 20 years plus that I've been on the board, that we do not exchange comments-
I apologize.
Uh, wi- with the audience in order to keep a certain level of decorum. And this gentleman has the right to express everything that he does, but it's our policy to answer in writing uh, i- i- if an answer is required. And, and I hope that we can keep to this.
Now, respectfully, Sandy, I might also point out that um, it specifically states on our agenda that no exceptions will be made, which one was. And it also says that the speaker will be allowed three minutes. And I started keeping track at 8:30, and now it is 8:39. So, I, I'm just saying that um, respect to you, we have a process. We have received letters. We have received communication. And it has been both positive also. So, I, with policy, this is policy that's right in front of us in black and white. And the personnel items that we are discussing are, it's quite honestly making me very uncomfortable. As we are on the verge of-
I just, I just have a few more things I want to say, and I'm going to finish up.
Open meetings laws being a problem here.
At the end of the season, like I said, I'm going to expect the board to visit each player and apologize to them. Because again, it's you guys that are the ones that are causing this. All right? On the school wall, if you stand on the football field in great big letters on the school, it says committed to excellence. We've all seen it. You can seen it from every point on that football field. That committed to excellence needs to start right here. Yeah, I'm asking you guys to please, for our kids, for my players coming up through Pop Warner, for my son who's coming up through the program, to please reconsider your position. Thank you. And as far as the timeline, there's nothing on the website that says it's committed to three minutes.
No committee reports? Comments? Dr. Dice?
I just, I, I just want to say one thing, just because I, somebody stopped me out in the hall and had mentioned that they had noticed that my children were here. I had, my five kids were sitting in the back corner. And they were here to witness somebody else that had gotten bored. They were being recognized tonight. They were here to support that particular person. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, I have a lot of pride in this district. And we do make some very difficult decisions. And I, you know, I want to say that I appreciate everybody that makes those um, as Dr. Dice says, we have those courageous conversations. We have them a lot more than, than the general public understands because a lot of times they happen behind closed doors. But we have, you know, specific to this budget, we have some people that have really stepped up to the plate in the past, that we have been asking them to do more and more and more and more. They're here a lot. You know, I see Stan, he's here quite a bit. We've asked him to do a lot more. And then I see him out at OCC the other night at a football game, or at a basketball game. And then Annette is here, you know, doing hopscotch with teachers because of the contract is specific, says that they have to be recalled in a certain way, and so on and so forth. And when we make decisions, it trickles down. And Annette deals with the aftermath, either positive or negative. Either we're giving somebody a job back or the carnage of somebody losing a job. So, you know, I, I want, I guess after hearing that, I want to say something positive about the fact that, you know, we have a lot of people that have made um, some big sacrifices. And I'm, we do- secretaries here that I want to say thank you for all that everybody has done and continues to do. It doesn't go unnoticed. It just might-
Also, Bob, trying to keep the- I wanted to apologize to you. I didn't mean to-
No, no, I apologize.
I didn't want to, I didn't mean to not have you-
Because I, again, I have to follow prot- protocol. And I apologize.
And I was looking forward to the good news thing. Good news. It says good news. I need some good news.
I just wanted you to know that. In an effort to keep things-
I understand, Sandy. Thank you.
But I mean, it was, we, we strayed from, and it's there for a reason. But not just in terms of your comments, in terms of, as pointed out, the length, you know, exceeded the length we submit people to.
Okay, uh, routine action items, um, A through D. Is there any questions or comments or, or any discussion on those? Take them as a group, Sandy. Second, Bob. Recommended action is to approve A, B, C. Um, food service part-time helpers? Just before, before we commented, since I was, I was reading through my stuff on Sunday morning, and I was commenting to my wife as to how the food service department was always our star and, and how four years ago, they, they earned $180,000 in profit, and next year they're going to lose 100. It just is mind-boggling how we can go from, I mean, the food service funded the purchase of equipment when we refurbished two or three of the buildings to the profits that they generated. It's just a sad, a sad thing when, when they're not generating the kind of revenues and-
Whole wheat pizza crust.
I know.
That the kids don't like.
It's a shame.
Kids don't like it, man. That's-
It's a shame.
The national trend.
And I would imagine that, that with the cost of everything, that people are, are bringing lunches more than they're buying them. At least that's what the trend looks like. But go ahead, Don. I'm sorry.
Actually, that's going to-
Well, actually, I was going to um, just briefly talk about it. And you're right, I think it's a, it's a combination, unfortunately, of the economic times, as well as the mandates in terms of what these lunches ha- have to constitute of, but consist of. Because they're operating in the red, we're looking to cut some costs. And they did an analysis in terms of meals per labor hour. And that results in the recommendation of cutting three part-time food service helper positions. One at Cicero Elementary School, one at Lakeshore Road Elementary School, and the third one at Smith Road Elementary School. People are not currently in these positions. So, the good news is we can make this decision and not impact any employees at the given time.
Relative um, action is to abolish the part-time food service helpers. Second, Scott. All in favor? Item B and C are authorized. New York's, um, ICE-MAC, could you just?
Sure. The district has participated in a consortium to buy energy, electricity, and natural gas. And this resolution would enable us to continue with that participation. There is one change in the way we're doing it. Uh, this year, they're actually asking for bids and quoting prices not to exceed. And provided the bids come in at or below those prices, we're committing in advance that we're going to, we're going to go forward with it. And, and the, uh, the consultant that's running the bid process assures us that by having a not-to-exceed price, um, it'll make the, uh, it'll get the best prices possible. And so, that's in our best-
Any questions or discussion? Motion to approve item- Second, Jackie. All in favor? Gas, uh, item C is the same, but for gas, any questions or discussion? Action is to approve as submitted. At, second, Tony. All in favor? Item D is the approval of special meetings of the Board of Education. Questions or discussion on those? Recommended action is to approve those dates- Second, Michael. All in favor?
Last year, remember, voted on the actual- voted completely- had a dialogue with the community with-
Every meeting for an hour.
I know we're doing that for-
And then we're having the public hearing.
On the, on the A, two weeks before. Okay.
The public hearing, I think, sufficed as the, but it was almost moot at that point. I mean-
Right, because we had had so much discussion.
We had so much discussion during the course.
But we had done, we had done that one meeting just budget before that hearing. So, the hearing was like-
Yes. Any other questions? Uh, do we have a motion? We had- Um, review of annual budget vote schedule.
Uh, the uh, as, as was mentioned in the presentation, um, on April 16th, the board will, will need to adopt the, the, um, the budget. Um, on the 5th, we'll have a special meeting. I'm sorry, on the 5th, we'll have a regular Board of Education meeting. On the 12th, we'll have a special meeting. On the 19th, we'll have another budget, uh, focused meeting, as well as on the 26th of March. Um, and then leading up to the 16th, where the, um, the budget will be adopted. So, there'll be a lot of opportunity, I think, to share information with the community and to, and to, and to discuss the budget. The critical, the critical date is the adoption of the budget on the 16th. Uh, property tax report card will go out on April 17th. And then the budget hea- hearing on the 8th. The, uh, legal notices and budget, and the budget notice will be mailed on May 9th. And the legal notice printed. And then on the 15th will be the budget vote. So, that's kind of a recap of the events. And it's, that's the calendar that the board's approved and, and is in accordance with the, with the law.
Question? Action is to approve the budget timeline. Bob, second, Michael. All in favor? Amendments to the July 11th, um, organizational meeting? Everybody read through these? Questions on any of those? Recommended action is to approve the July 11th, 2011 annual organizational meeting. Favor? Item G is the acknowledgement of a gift. Diane Hunter, grandmother of a CNS high school student, was selected as a grand prize winner of $1,000 in the Pepsi Tops tackle some sports equipment sweepstakes sponsored by Pepsi Beverage Company. As a grand prize winner, the recipient was designated Pepsi Grant. Ms. Hunter has designated the CNS outdoor track team to receive this grant. Our recommendation that we accept with gratitude the gift of $1,000 to the girls' outdoor track team and thank Ms. Hunter. Got, hey, the motion? Second, Michael. All in favor?
Is the track team, uh, still on, on our books, North Syracuse School District books? Outside organization?
It's a school district team.
It's our track team. It's our track team, the girls' track.
I, I thought that they had to have their own account now. It's still a school district account, or?
Oh, what the money, no, the money will actually do is just be designated for track equipment for the girls' team. So, it'll be a school donation. It'll come to the school, and the school will use the money for girls' track equipment.
I think, are you asking if it needs to go to the booster club or?
Asking where the account is.
What account?
There's no account. They don't have a, they don't have a bank account?
No, they don't. It's just, the school, there's a school dysfunction.
Amazing. They don't have a bank account. Tell me how they went to Cortland on, on their trips for, uh, what do you call them, things? Jumping things? How did they do that when the, this, this team was supposed to pay for it? How did that happen?
I, I, I didn't make the connection between this donation and the, the trips that they've done.
No, I'm trying to find out where this account is. Who's got the account?
It's, it's, uh, under Tom Tatham's guidance as the athletic director. And it's part of the school's funding of athletics.
Coming to the school district.
School donation.
Different than what you, I think you're talking-
Oh, she's talking about where they get the money to do their-
That would be the, you know-
Buddy, we budget for athletic trips and whatnot?
Oh, that's not-
No, no. What, what she's trying to, and, and Pat, I wasn't on the school board. A lot of these booster clubs were part of the school district at one time. Uh, the funding, my crack, Pat. And now they've been moved out. And I think she's getting confused. This, this is a gift coming to the school district.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
This is something different.
Right.
I wanted to know where the account was for this booster group.
I believe that that was clarified to us. And I can't, I can't specifically say how it was funded, it was funded, but I believe in our Friday letter...
Yes.
And the questions that were, you know, our question and answer section, it does explain there how that...
That the booster group paid for it. That's what it was stated. I never got the answer as to how much they paid for. How much was it given back to the district for that? And I also believe that Cortland is not in Section 3, therefore there was no paperwork to allow them to go to Cortland. And I never got the answer for that either. Just trying to tell you something.
Unrelated to this.
Okay, unrelated. Forget it.
Yeah, it's, the question's, Ben, it's in our packet.
So your question is where the account is and where they got the money to go to Cortland?
I want, they did go to Cortland.
Where they got the money to go to Cortland?
Was said, it was stated that the booster club paid for it. If there's no booster club, then they couldn't have paid for it. And I also asked for the figure that they paid the district back for the busing to those students. And it's also out of Section 3, my belief is. Therefore, there was no paperwork filed to let them go.
Send me an email tomorrow and...
Okay. Sorry.
Did we have a motion to accept the gift?
We already did.
We already did. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items?
I need to have one removed so I can, so I do not have to vote yes for it.
Okay, so there's...
And there's another person that I'd like to talk about.
Well, then, let's make a motion to go into executive session.
No, I don't think it's...
Well, we need to do that. I'm making a motion, we go into executive session to discuss personnel items A and B. Second, Michael. All in favor? Unanimous, and we'll be right back.
Might as well do it. I don't think it's...
Getting motivated now.
Getting a little...
You know, my guys, the other thing is, you know, we have an automated meal thing now, you know, where...
Last show.
My kids would buy whatever they wanted, all the à la carte items. And then my wife figured it out and said, "No, no, I want you mine." But it's really, there was a big... Like a national trend right now, though, it's a problem across the country, these are the food service.
Okay, we're back in session.
We've got a long ways to go, Pam.
Before we, we vote, I would like to acknowledge retirements. And trying to get them up and fine to make sure I get every... Ruth Beasley, physical education teacher, retires with 21 years of service at Kyle W. Siley Bear Road. Harry Davis, 38 years as a technology teacher at the junior high school. Jamie Kenny, art teacher at the junior high school, 33 years of service. Marley, special ed teacher at CNS, 23 years of service. Donna Mavica, a science teacher at Roxborough Road Middle School, 28 years of service. David, Dr. David Morton, Director of Social Studies, Fine Arts, and Languages, retires with 26 years of service. Nancy Morton, Gillette Road Middle School, a reading teacher, retires with 34 years of service. Lenora Pedizano, special ed teacher, North Syracuse Junior High School, retires with 29 years of service. Teresa Rice, math teacher at CNS, 20 years of service. Sandra Scaronno, special ed teacher at CNS, 21 years of service. Thomas Tatham, Director of Physical Education and Athletics, 19 years of service. Vincent Tricassi, teaching assistant at Kyle W. Siley Bear Road Elementary School, five and a half years of service. And Margaret Vosberg, psychologist at Gillette Road Middle School, retires with 29 years of service. We congratulate them and wish them well. And Jackie, you had something to say?
Yes. I wanted to make a message about Ruth Beasley, although, you know, I'm looking at all the years of service that everybody has done. I don't really want to single out one particular person, but I happened to be at Bear Road today and a reading teacher just gave me a note and I just wanted to mention it. It's a little long, so I'm just going to give you the highlights. She, she basically, in a joking manner, basically asked us to think long and hard before we approved the retirement for Mrs. Beasley because she felt that it would be a great loss to our district and our school and to her personally. She did mention that she did stomp her feet and cried and threatened tears and got down on her knees and everything to ask her not to retire.
Jackie, I did that also.
You did too? And that she felt that she doesn't know who is going to take over all the extra projects that Ruth Beasley has done, including Fuel Up for 60, Girls and Boys Basketball, Fitness Fanatics, Festival Races, and on and on and on. And this is just one example of all the, the years that these teachers have put in and, you know, this is just one person and, you know, she's, she's in a, she's in a wonderful company tonight, all these marvelous people that I hate to see go.
Do you mind if I say something?
Oh, go ahead.
Piggybacking on Ruth, one of the, you know, my children now have been at Bear Road for three years and she got to Bear Road shortly after I left Bear Road, so I, this particular one is a teacher. But, you know, I got to know Ruth not so much through the classroom, but through the PTO meetings because she's one of the teachers that's a pretty regular... Now, that's additional time for her out of her personal time, so, you know, that was one thing that I got to know her from that. Ben Salsa was at Bear Road. You know, there were, you could tell he had opinions that he knew were contradictory to maybe more his program, but he was not vocal about it. He still showed his support for the program, really there, truly there for the kids, and I was always very impressed with that. Dr. Morton, I actually worked for, when I worked in Mr. Tatham's office, so I worked for the two of them. And, you know, I jokingly said a couple weeks ago that I never even knew there was an athletic director, but, because of Marlene, but, you know, before Tom was there, it was actually Ruth's father that was in that office, Mr. Bader. So, and it comes up full circle, but Dr. Morton is a quiet leader. He's a great man. And Tom, I love to go to sporting events and see him and then, because I might be making the rounds myself because I haven't been able to get out, I will go to maybe more than one event in a night and I will see him at both events and then hear from somebody else that he was actually at a third or fourth place. So it's kind of amazing that somebody puts that many miles on their car and doesn't mind doing it. And Skip Davis, it's listed as Harry Davis, but I know him as Skip Davis. I had him as a photography teacher, I had him as a, and I had him as a cycling friend also. So he's avid boy scoutor, outdoorsman kind of a person, great guy, wonderful with Science Olympiad. We had a little bit of a caveat, one year we were in Science, we had a mousetrap car that we were working off of the previous years. We hit it right on the nose and couldn't figure out why we were two meters off. And Sandy Scaronno, I didn't know very well, but she was actually my homeroom teacher when I was at Roxborough. So I can say that a lot of these teachers I remember and I have very fond memories of them and, and that just speaks to positive influence, a lot of these teachers, such a quiet way, they don't even realize.
Me, my, my personal connection with Dr. Morton goes back to well before the canteen started when Community Connections was, was out there in the world regarding...
1996?
Yeah, 94, 95, 96. Dr. Morton knows a lot about history, he knows a lot about art and music, and he's very vocal about that stuff. What people don't know is that he has a quiet passion about kids and anti-substance abuse. And he has done so much in our community to make sure kids are happy and healthy and safe and he has just quietly, if it wasn't for Doc Morton pushing the teen center idea with the rest of the founding fathers, we wouldn't have a canteen right now. And I personally was a stay-at-home mom. The only experience I had in the community was through automotive service. That's the only thing I had before beginning to do the anti-substance abuse stuff. I had a high school diploma, nothing more. And he instilled in me a sense of pride in myself and what I could accomplish and the sky was the limit. And that's because Dr. Morton said, "You can do it. You just keep pushing, you can do it." The canteen wouldn't be open today if it wasn't for somebody like that who believed in the kids that we have in our community and how they need to be safe. So I will be eternally grateful to him for all that he did.
And wrote those grants. Put in all the time looking up what was available, writing them, organizing him. Aye.
Yeah, he's going to be missed.
Hey, personnel item A, I'd like to make a motion that we separate co-curricular volunteer and spring coaches. Second, Catherine. Recommended action is to approve co-curricular and spring coach, spring coach amendments. All in favor? Co-curricular volunteer and spring coach amendments.
Approving the change.
Change. No, wait, wait a minute.
Okay. I'm just going by what you're doing.
What we're doing is we're voting co-curricular volunteer...
Okay.
And spring coach amendments. They're separate, okay? All in favor of approving them? Gotcha?
Okay.
Okay, how many have, we got nine here? So that's seven, yes. Opposed? Opposed. Motion, three opposed, no. Three, two opposed, seven for motion.
All right. Getting late and we all can't think.
Motion carries. I was just making sure, because when you raised your hand, I said, "Wait a minute."
Well, he told me it was to approve the...
Okay, the remaining items on personnel A.
I appreciate doing that for me, please.
No problem. The remaining items on personnel A, a motion to approve them as submitted. First, Sandy. Second, Michael. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item B, I forgot, I'm losing, I just about lost it tonight, I apologize, folks. Recommended action is to acknowledge personnel, item B, as submitted. Motion? Tony. Second, Sandy. All in favor? And that's unanimous. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with one district bargaining unit, to receive an update on one legal matter relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment history of four individuals with action to follow on one legal matter. Second, Tony. All in favor? Unanimous, and we're adjourned.